This meeting to order, City of Carrollton Special Call Meeting, Mayor and Council Meeting, July 8, 2019. If you'll please rise for the pledge by me and remain rising for the invocation by Mr. Triplet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we come to you tonight, and we just thank you, Lord, for all of our many blessings. Father, that we thank you for our country that you've given us, where we just celebrated a birthday, Lord. And, Lord, we thank you for your provision, your blessing on our country, on our state, on our city. Father, we ask your continued blessing and provision in the years to come. Father, for all of our elected leaders, Lord, with our city council, all the way up to our leaders in Washington, D.C., we ask you, God, to give us wisdom, give them discernment, give them guidance and direction, Lord. Father, we ask you to bless this meeting, that everything is said and done would be pleasing to you and acceptable on your side. Father, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Gets us to item number four, citizens' comments. Is there anybody here that would like to address the council on anything? If you do, please come up to the front, state your name and address. Seeing no one is hot tonight, so I guess everybody stay home. We'll move ahead. Item number five is minutes, June 3, 2019, regular meeting and June 13, 2019, special call meeting. Assume everybody had a chance to reread all that, any questions or any straightened up, sure.
Make a mo- make a motion when you approve.
Have a motion, do a second. Have a second. Thank you, Gerald. Met. All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you, gentlemen. Item number six, mayor and council announcement. Anybody got anything they want to say?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, if I may, please. I would like, Tim will be as brief as possible, but I would like to recognize city staff and overly emphasize the importance of little things. The little calls that I send, the little text messages that I, the text messages that I send through Tim, who disseminates information out to you. I would like to thank you for the rapid response to those little things, because those little things, I believe, are what are so important to our citizens, while the big things are, too, brush removal, welfare checks, et cetera. Those things mean the world to me, and they mean the world to our citizens. We should never take those things lightly. So, thank you for that. I would like to ask, I need refreshing, I do apologize for that. Who did the, which department was, I think it was Peter, maybe, was responsible for the grass and edging on Alabama Street that I posted on Facebook? And people were like screaming all over saying, why does it look like that?
I don't know.
Mike Green, Peter Meyerhofer, I applaud you for cleaning up Alabama Street and edging that, the street and the road, getting up those nasty weeds. There's nothing as depressing as living somewhere, having to look at weeds that are taller than you are and having to drive through weeds and dilapidated properties. So, I applaud you for that. And I think everybody in this room should, too, because what a turnaround. In less than a few hours, it was done. So, I applaud you guys. Aren't y'all going to applaud them, too? Maybe you don't like it, anyway. All right. Peter, I would also like to thank you for your work in Robert Hendrix Park. My constituents complained to you, one man calls about it every day, complaining about Robert Hendrix Park. He can do that, and that's what we're here for. We're here to take that, and I appreciate that. And I'm strong, and we're all stronger, made better, the city's better because of it. So, I'd like to thank you for the work that you've done in Robert Hendrix Park, to turn that park around and that beautiful pavilion and structure that's over there now. The function bathrooms that are brand new and absolutely beautiful. That park is turning around and moving in the right direction. The people are happy, I'm happy, and I get good comments about that. Legends West as well, thank you to the department for your work there. West Carrollton Center, pleased with what's going on there as well. Very, very happy. I want the citizen comments and complaints to continue to come in. I'm in no way tired of that, and I'm in no way upset or perturbed at all in the complaints that come in. Keep those coming, and I'll keep sending them out. That's what we're here for as your representatives, and that's our job. That's why we get paid 25 cents an hour. So, that was supposed to be funny. Where's the sense of humor? Y'all, come on. Met's laughing. You're the only person up here with a sense of humor. So, tomorrow night at Legends West, we are doing a, y'all know about probiotics, right? How good they are for your belly and all that. We're having a probiotics class tomorrow night at 6:30 at Legends West, if you care to come out. And Paul Feather is teaching. He's a local organic farmer. He provides all the materials, all the food, and it's really nice to do it last week. I forgot what we made, kombucha or whatever that stuff is. But come out and join us. Thank you to the guys up here as well. Thank you. That's all.
I would like to kind of piggyback on Gerald and ditto to the city staff. I've had a lot of constituents reach out to me, clean ditches and help them with small projects, and the city staff has done excellent. With Tim Gritzert, I really appreciate you following up with all that, from looking at stop signs and replacing signs, like I said, cleaning ditches. So, thank y'all city staff. Special thanks to Carrollton Police Department. My ward, for some reason, seems like all over the world, got hit with a lot of crime, and the police did an excellent job of hunting down the perpetrators and arresting them. And Joel, I just want you to know, my wife and I walked around the neighborhood yesterday, and we had four cars stop us and tell us that thank you personally and your police officers for everything they did, and the rapid response. And they use words like grateful, and we're so blessed to live in a community like this, and thank goodness for the police. So, I mean that wholeheartedly, and to all city staff.
While we're bragging on city staff, I'll mention Tommy Holland. Tommy, I stay on Tommy a good bit, because I have one, one main person in the community that stays on me about traffic stuff and flashing lights and that kind of thing. But Tommy jumps right on that always. So, thank you, Tommy, and the rest of the staff.
I want to shout out to Joel and our systems upkeep guys with the parade. They did an excellent job. Fire Department had to make a little pit stop at the First Methodist Church where a lady got hit, heat, little heat on her. Responded real well, didn't make a big scene, everything got taken care of. The streets got cleaned up immediately right after things were done. Just hats off to all the well did, and went off real smooth, and thank you very much.
I know I forgot to mention this right quick, but the fireworks show and the Carroll Symphony Orchestra did a phenomenal job on July 4. I saw Jim Triplet there as well, but big crowd. I don't know who, who cut the grass over at the school system, if that was them or us, but the grass looked great, and everybody had a great time, it looked like. So, good job with the 4th of July. I guess that's Erica and company. And Tim, we'll give Tim some credit for that.
Tim.
And I want to echo what you've all said about this staff. They're wonderful, and they work together as a team. And you look at something like the parade, it involves just about every department, and they all did a great job, and I appreciate that. The Leanne Womack concert was excellent, so our downtown is, again, just a great place to be. Very proud of that. I want to remind you, we've got a work session, the quarterly work session is on the 18th of this month. There will be an item to vote on, that's unusual for a work session, but we've got a settlement and an old, old lawsuit that's going to come up that night. So, and again, I want to thank our police again, they've had it, it's been a very, very busy month, and appreciate the job that they do. Thank you.
All right, moving on to unit number eight, approval for agenda items for consideration. Have a motion?
I move we approve these items as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Everybody ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number one, Met, proclamation, Captain Eric Cole, achievements.
I have the, the honor of giving a proclamation, Commander Eric D. Cole, as I'm establishing May 31st as our appreciation day. This is the office of the mayor, Carrollton, Georgia. Whereas Commander Eric D. Cole, U.S. Navy, was born and raised in Carrollton and graduated from Carrollton High School in 1994. And whereas Commander Cole earned a bachelor's degree in electrical engineering from the United States Naval Academy, was commissioned in 1998, and earned a master's degree in engineering management from Old Dominion University in 2005. And whereas Commander Cole has served as a division officer aboard the USS Cheyenne, engineer officer aboard the USS Jimmy Carter, executor officer aboard the USS Maine, and commanding officer of the USS Alaska. And whereas Commander Cole has earned a meritorious service medal in the Navy and Marine Corps Commendation and Achievement Medals, and many unit awards that reflect the skill and camaraderie of the crews with whom he has served. And whereas Commander Cole completed his command of the USS Alaska on May 31, 2019, and has reported, reported to Sturgis, Germany to serve as a chief nuclear enterprise division in the United States European Command overseeing U.S. Nuclear Forces in Europe. Now therefore, in recognition and appreciation of Commander Cole's continuing life service to our great nation, and with hometown pride in his achievements, the mayor and the city council of the City of Carrollton do hereby proclaim May 31, 2019, as Commander Eric D. Cole Appreciation Day in the City of Carrollton, Georgia. In witness whereof, I have hereunto signed my name and caused the seal of the City of Carrollton to be affixed this 8th day of July in the year of our Lord, 2019. Walt Hollingsworth, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Join me in applause. Woo, woo! Mr. and Mrs. Cole, and your son is already in Germany?
Yes.
He's already in Germany?
He could be with us. He could be with us. I know that he would want us on his path to thank the entire city for their long and continued support of him, but he, his wife, and his family, since he was at the Naval Academy, and he's been at 21 years that he's served in the U.S. Navy. This community has truly, truly given him support and encouragement, and for that, he is grateful and we appreciate it. Thank you.
And Emily, real quick, in case the audience doesn't know, the USS Alaska was a nuclear submarine, correct?
All submarine services.
All submarine services, okay.
A ballistic missile.
A ballistic missile, right. That's incredible. Can we come down and take a picture? We want to get out here.
Tell them that we take them back, try to get them.
Slide in, one.
Those are always so much fun to do. I didn't notice a thing.
Item number two, Resolution 14-219, equipment lease purchase agreement. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 14-219 is the, or is the, the resolution to authorize the actual closing documents for the purchase of the 21 police cars that were authorized two months ago. So, basically, this is a formality, but it's something that the, the leasing agency, the finance agency requires, and they are, hold on one second, I'll give you the, it's First Capital Equipment Leasing out of Massachusetts. And so, they require that there be a resolution for these specific documents. That's what I have before you and ask you to approve.
Anyone have any questions? Motion, we approve.
Second.
Any more discussion? Everyone in favor approving Resolution 14-219, please raise your hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Resolution 15-219, UDO amendment, Mrs. Studdard.
The second item on your agenda is a UDO text amendment proposal for Section 2.4.25, student housing in the UDO. This text amendment has actually been requested by, and submitted by Attorney David Mecklen on behalf of the client, his client, Mallory &amp; Evans Development. This is the developer that is redeveloping the campus walk, multifamily student housing development right there at the end of Foster Street and West Georgia Drive. They are requesting that they, that, basically, that we approve exceptions to the limit of maximum occupancy and bedroom, bedroom unit. Currently, we'll only allow four-bedroom units. Part of their marketing strategy, I think, is to offer five-bedroom units, and they want to allow for staff to administratively waive that four-bedroom limit unit, unit limit, sorry. And this text amendment reflects that. This text amendment was prepared by Ty Singer, I believe by David Mecklen. He is here to speak to that. Like I said, this is not a staff amendment, so I'm going to let him finish up. The planning commission did review this at their last meeting, and they recommended unanimous approval. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. David Mecklen, 87 Old Mill Court, Carrollton, Georgia. I am here to, on behalf of Mallory &amp; Evans, to request that you approve this text amendment. Simple explanation, as Erica said, was that our ordinance currently limits a maximum number of units in a student housing complex to four units. We have requested this text amendment, text amendment to allow the staff to vary that in certain situations if they deem it appropriate. In the renovation of the campus, of the complex, which was formerly known as Campus Walk, which will be renamed once it's torn down and rebuilt, Mallory &amp; Evans has developed complexes at other campuses across the country, and they have found it to be very advantageous to have, to build a, an apartment unit that has both three, four, and five-bedroom units. And the reason for that is that, you know, some students, you know, have two friends that they want to live with, other students will have four friends that they want to live with. The proposal that Mallory &amp; Evans is going to submit to get this built will average four units, but they'd like to have the ability to have three, four, and five-bedroom units. I don't know if y'all have it in your packet, but I submitted the floor plans and the drawings that they have built in other college campuses, and that, and they really have been their most, the five-bedroom units have been their best sellers, really, because it allows the students not to have to, you know, leave somebody out of their group that they want to have in the, in the apartment unit with them. We think it would be, you know, in, in the best interest of the city to allow this. You still have absolute control, and that your city staff has to deem it to be a good thing in order to, to approve it. And in all honesty, I haven't come across any strict rationale for why there is a four-bedroom unit limit to begin with. You can understand why it might be out in the rest of the community where you wouldn't want to have places overbuilt, but in a student complex, I would submit to you that it's, would be in the best interest of the, of the community. Be glad to answer any questions.
You have an estimated number, how many five bedrooms they may want to construct?
I sent that in, I don't know. Let me see if I can find it quickly. Here it is. They plan to have 36 units of three bedrooms, 80 units of four bedrooms, and 40 units of five bedrooms, which averages out about four.
Anybody got any questions?
Mr. David McKenna from Mallory &amp; Evans is also here, if you have any questions for the developer himself.
Erica, you say we're going, the city staff will work this?
Yes, the way this is written is they would request an exception to city staff. Typically, you'll see, I think Met, Met mentioned this earlier, that sometimes it's typically the city manager or his designee is typically how that's written. This was actually an amendment that, that Mr. Mallory put forward to the planning commission, so that it's written in kind of his language. But a lot of times, you'll see the city manager or his designee. We do some administrative waivers already. Parking is one. We can do some administrative waivers if it's a small enough percentage on setbacks, sign, square footage. So, there's already kind of a precedent to do some of this, but it would be the same, same thing. They would just need to make a request and writing and a justification for it.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions?
Hey, Dave, David, where are you on the, if this text amendment is defeated tonight, where are you on the building the complex? I'm not saying, I'll be honest with you, I'm against the text amendment. I don't want us to delegate our rulemaking authority to city staff. I believe that should be up to city council and mayor. So, I'll be making a motion either to defeat it, or if someone makes a motion for it, to approve it, I'll be voting against it. I just want you to understand my grounds, due to, I don't want us to delegate. However, I'm not saying I'm against the project. So, where are you? Will your project come before us next month in August?
I'm not sure I can answer that question.
Okay.
I know that the property has been purchased. I think the, the plans are to begin construction later this year. If they're unable to build the three, four, five units that they'd like to build, I don't know whether that will delay the project or not.
Right. Again, I'm not saying I'm against the project. I'm against the text amendment, and I was under the impression that the project was coming before the city council and the mayor, until I got our packet last week, and then I saw it was a text amendment. So, I would have reached out to you and told you, but...
They intend to follow the, the policies and procedures of the city they have so far and will continue to do so. It's just that your ordinance completely prohibits any five-bedroom units, no matter, nobody, nobody has the power to grant them an ability to build a five-bedroom unit as the ordinance exists today. It was thought that this was the best way to, to allow a five-bedroom unit to be built, yet to give the city control over it, because your, your city staff, if they say no, then it won't get built. They have to convince the city staff to build it. If, if the reasoning is that that is an issue that should come to the council every time that somebody asks for a variance to the, to the ordinance, admittedly, it could have been written up that way. I just, I didn't know whether or not, and I anticipated that you'd rather have your city staff making those type of determinations, rather than the council voting on every variance from your, your building codes and ordinances.
But the way, the way text amendment is drafted, it could give city staff the authority to approve a seven-bedroom unit or a six-bedroom unit. In theory, I mean, it could. That's the way it's drafted.
In theory, that, that's true. Based on my experience in working with your city and your city staff, I have to be very convincing.
I would say it's probably unlikely.
I have to be very convincing. They don't take it lightly.
Right.
And they're very protective of preserving the integrity of the city.
David, thank you. How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, I'm well. Haven't seen you in a while. But I want to ask you more about the floor plan. I lived in a college dorm that was identical to this. However, ours had four bedrooms, two on either side, with shared bathrooms by two bedrooms. We didn't have, this has five bathrooms, if I'm not mistaken?
It, it does.
And that, that one common area where the sofa is, and we have the visual up for people to see out there, right? So, that one sofa in the common area, I, I can remember, and I'm trying to be as fair as, as I possibly can, whenever we had company in our rooms, that common area would become very, very crowded with four individuals. If each, each of us had two individuals visiting us, so one person visiting us, that would increase the number of people in our apartment to eight. Here, it would be increased to 10. to see out there, right? So that one sofa in the common area, I can remember, and I'm trying to be as fair as I possibly can, whenever we had company in our rooms, that common area would become very, very crowded with four individuals. If each of, each of us had two individuals visiting us, or one person visiting us, that would increase the number of people in our apartment to eight. Here, it would be increased to 10, and if they were watching a movie, or studying, or doing some project together, which we often did when I was in college, in that common area, it could be crowded. But that's, that's just one thought. My other thought is, what is, and I don't know who could answer this on the council or city staff, what was our, what mine, but what's the reasoning behind four bedrooms versus five bedrooms? Is it what I'm saying now, is this overcrowding?
Well, I can tell you at the time, it, you know, there were proposals for six-bedroom units, and we felt like there should be some control. It was, it came on the heels of the moratorium for apartments, and so I guess the philosophy at the time was, was, I would just say restrictive. And I would also make a suggestion here, if it would make Councilman Lane more comfortable, why not limit this to five units? Or limit this to five units and an average of four? That way, it won't be a blanket approval, like it's written.
And what's the average, like what's the average number, when we say the average of four?
I calculated, and this does average out at four units, four bedrooms per unit.
Then how many would be five bedrooms?
The number I just read, I believe, is 40. Councilman Burge, to address one other question you raised, that...
Yes, sir.
You may already know from the packet, but just for the audience, the five-bedroom units are essentially two-story units. I mean, it's obvious, you can see the stairs there, but it's three downstairs and two up. And again, I, I haven't lived in a five-bedroom unit, but I'm told by my client that they are really the most popular units that they have, and there's a great market demand for it.
Is that in-house washer dryer right there as well? That's something we didn't have, but I wish we did.
Is there a washer and dryer in that?
I know that seems like a...
Yeah, David McKenna.
Very unimportant question, but I'd just like to know all these detail, it is one? Okay.
Yeah, a little bit of background on the five-bedroom unit. Four-bedroom has been sort of the standard for off-campus student housing for a lot of years. In recent years, developers have been experimenting with five-bedroom, six-bedroom units around the country, and we've done this exact unit type two or three other places, and it really is very popular. Real advantage of it is, we can offer lower rent to the student with that fifth bedroom, because you're spreading the cost of the kitchen, which is the most expensive part of an apartment, across five bedrooms instead of four. And so, that's, I think, the secret for its success. Plus, the two-level, it feels more like a townhouse than it does an apartment. It's a wonderful unit, it's important, we think it's important for us to be successful here.
I think it would only, visually, it would only improve the area. Haley, could we scroll down so the taxpayers can see what this area would look like, potentially? Like the exterior, you know, like that? Nice.
I don't think we're planning on building a lake in front of the building.
That was my next question. I was going to request that you put a lake and palm tree, what are those, Sago palms, or what are they?
I think that's a photo of a project we're under construction on, almost completing in Daytona Beach.
Will it be sideways like, no, I'm teasing, no, I'm playing. That would be cool, though, very conceptual, side of the box.
I have a question, um, city, for city attorney. If this text amendment is disapproved, does that hamper the applicant in coming forward in August? I mean, they'll just ask for a variance or all future.
It will not, it does not trigger the moratorium on filing an application for a rezoning, because that's specific to a rezoning request.
Right. So they would just come back for a variance, asking for a five-bedroom?
Well, I don't know that they would be able to get a variance from the four-bedroom requirement, because that's not typically the kind of thing you would get a variance from in the ordinance. So they could, they could approach you guys about another text, a corresponding text amendment at the same time. But typically, you would not increase the allowed number of bedrooms through a variance. It's not the kind of thing you would expect to see a variance from.
So I guess I'm asking, procedurally, what do, so if we defeat this motion, if it's defeated, then they cannot build a five-bedroom unit, is that what you're saying?
As it stands right now.
So we have to put in the text amendment in order for them to build a five-bedroom unit?
Either that, or in theory, they could come in and apply for a different zoning that might allow something like that, maybe a putt. I don't know, we'd have to look at that and see. But what, if I were representing the developer, and let's play out a hypothetical, let's say 60 days down the road, they're going to come in and ask for whatever approval they need from the mayor and council, and I'm not familiar enough with the project itself to know. But 60 days from now, they come in and ask for whatever approval they need, if the five-bedroom issue was still an issue, I would propose another text amendment. There's nothing that would prevent that from happening, and have both the requests for whatever it is they need with a corresponding text amendment, and there wouldn't be anything in the ordinance that would prevent them from doing that.
Any more questions?
If I could just...
Go ahead, David.
I want to be clear, we're not asking for any additional beds in this unit, in this complex. City's already approved that. We're not asking for any additional...
So you got, so you got the same number of beds?
Same number of beds, we're just splitting them up differently. So it's, it's not increasing anything, other than the way we split up the beds within the complex. I want to be clear about that. We're not asking for anything more than what you've already approved. If, if the concern is simply that you're allowing the staff to make your determination, which I perhaps wrongly decide, wrongly thought that you would be in favor of, because your staff is very, so, my experience is your staff is so protective of the integrity of the city, that that would be the strongest focal point of protecting the city's interest. If that's not the case, and if your concern is that you want this to come to you to decide whether or not a developer can have five bedrooms instead of three, you have the ability to simply amend the text amendment right now and say that here tonight. If that's the only change that you're concerned about, you can change it to, from saying that the city staff will approve it, to saying that the council will approve it.
That sounds good to me.
Where it says city staff may in its sole discretion approve exceptions to the limits of maximum occupancy and bedrooms per unit in order to provide for the appropriate mix of unique, high-quality products, you can change city staff to city council. But that will mean that we'll be back here, standing in front of you, saying the exact same thing we're saying tonight.
Is this a one-time offering, Erica? Is this going to be, you think we'll get this coming back to us again, or?
I can't 100% answer that. I'll tell you, I mean, we're not, I'm, we're kind of on the other, we're kind of on the regulatory side of the develop, of development, and they're kind of on the, you know, the marketing side. And so, they might get answered that better than I could, as to whether or not we'd see it again. I did want to ask Chuck something. Can they, can that be done tonight, all at once, so that they're not coming back the next month?
Can what be done tonight?
If they make the amendment?
Yes, it can be.
Okay.
It's already, yeah, they're free to, once it's, once the process has been initiated, they're free to, to do with the ordinance what they want to as it relates to this. To go back to David's point for just a second, what changing it tonight allows them to do is to go ahead and, you, you guys obviously can always change the ordinance, but if you don't change it tonight, then it has to go back through the process. Whatever's being proposed has to go back before the Planning Commission and then come back to you guys. The advantage, if you will, of, if you're so inclined to make the change that David suggested, is that you can go ahead and do that tonight, still give yourself the discretion to allow for additional bedrooms, and they don't have to go back through the process again. Go ahead and make a motion.
Thank you, Chuck. One, one other point that I reminded, reminded me why I wrote it the way that I did, is because if we came to you and asked you to amend the text, to simply approve five-bed, five-bedroom units, two-five-bedroom units, and that's creating something that anybody and everybody who can build their apartments to that standard, my assumption was that you did not want to have every developer coming in, asking for a five-bedroom unit if they hadn't been thoroughly vetted by the city, as these people have, because they've been here probably three different rounds now, presenting this project. As they are tearing down, I want to call it blight, they are tearing down blight to build something new for the college, I think they've been well-received and well-treated by the city. But that's why I didn't write it up, to force you to take five-bedroom units.
Anybody got any more questions?
I'd like to make a motion.
Matt, before we do, I think out of abundance of caution, we ought to at least just ask if anybody's here to speak in opposition to the text amendment.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this proposal? Seeing no one, go ahead, Matt.
I'm going to make a motion, but just for purposes for the mayor and for city council members, all I'm going to do is strike the word "city staff," substitute city council mayor. All right? So I make a motion that we adopt section 2.04.25, student housing. The following term shall be added to paragraph two of section 2.04.25. City council and the mayor may in its sole discretion approve exceptions to the limits of maximum occupancy and bedroom per unit in order to provide for the appropriate mix of unique, high-quality products within the district designated by this section.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of Mett's motion to bring it to city council instead of city staff, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Serge. Item number four.
Say thank you.
Item number four, property purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Tommy Lee's here tonight. He came to see me with several of the church fathers from Grace Covenant Church, and talked to me about that there's 4.4 acres that the church owns, that the city has been using for part of its disc golf course. This was something that I think was negotiated with a previous pastor, and with some folks who built the golf course itself. They explained to me, and I know they also talked to you, Mr. Mayor, that they were a little concerned about their liability, and I think, I think it's also a bit unfair to them that their property's tied up for something the city's using. So the discussion was, and the recommendation tonight is that the city purchase that property. We hired Bass and Associate to do an appraisal on the property. The appraisal came back at $80,000. We think that's fair, and it's my understanding that the church is in agreement with that amount of money, so we recommend that you approve the purchase of this property.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion carries. Special Call of Election, Ward Two, seat. Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And your agenda packet tonight is a memorandum with information concerning the special election that we will be conducting to fill the unexpired term of Ward Two caused by the resignation of Roy Wojcicki. Special election will be held on November the 5th. That's the same day as our regular scheduled city elections. Qualifying will be held here at City Hall, 315 Bradley Street, beginning on Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, 8:30 a.m., ending on Friday, August 23rd, 2019, 4:30 p.m. And I will be handling the coordination of the publication and the call of the special election with Mr. Greg Rigby, the election superintendent for Carroll County. Just sidebar, we will be set up at the first-floor conference room. That seems to be the most convenient location in City Hall for the payment and the receipting of qualifying fees, having available notaries to notarize the documents. As the memo states, this is information-only, no, no official action required on your part. And this timeframe will be the same for the regular scheduled city elections for the city, the offices of mayor, and the city wards number three and four. And also, at this same time, we will be qualifying the school board races that are regularly scheduled, that will be wards one and four, and one at-large seat for the school board. Any, any questions?
So qualifying will be here and not at the elections offices here?
Yeah, at City Hall, first floor, conference room, as you come in, to the right, as you come in the front door.
And those dates are August 21st of the...
Wednesday, August 21st, through Friday, August 23rd, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item number six. FYI, 219, 2020 budget adoption. Jim, I think that's you, too.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. And your agenda packs tonight is just a brief summary of the operating budgets that we proposed to you at the June meeting. We conducted the public hearing. We also submitted to you a new copy of the transmittal letter, just for informational purposes, if you need to refer back to that. As the memo states, there have been no changes or adjustments to the draft budgets originally submitted to you. We have provided an outline, summary of each operating fund and special revenue fund budget that we are proposing for your final consideration and approval. As you will see on the memo, general fund, the budget is proposed, shows a overall increase of $1,173,006. That's a 4% increase over FY19 current year. Want to make the contrast, after you back out the capital expenditures that we're proposing for the general fund, the net operations and maintenance budget shows an actual decrease of $354,381. That's a 1% decrease in the O and M operational budget for, for general fund, net of capital expenditures. The water and sewer fund is showing a $1,910,000 decrease, and as we conveyed to you in June, that is because of the removal of the holding pond until we finish the permitting process, and at which time that will be reinstated for consideration. Sanitation fund showing a $368,000 increase for the proposed budget, 7%. And hotel motel is showing a $8,000 increase for the new year, with the hazardous materials response team and the drug seizure fund showing no increase, they will be at the same amounts as current-year levels. Couple of highlights that I just want to emphasize for all three operating funds, general fund, water sewer fund, sanitation fund, all three operating budgets contain provision for a 3% merit-based combination cost of living allowance for, for city employees. All three of the operational budgets are assuming a 8% increase in group health insurance costs, and we are property liability insurance. Based on the solicitation process that we went through this year, they're budgeted to be at the same amounts as current year. So, that in a nutshell is the budgets that we presented in June, so any, any questions, I'll be glad to answer at this time. I'll be glad to answer at this time.
Does anyone have any questions for Jim?
I just want to applaud you, Jim, and all city staff, and, and all department heads on an $800,000 decrease in operations and management. That's incredible, under the general fund, so thank you all for that.
Have a motion we adopt? Motion and a second. All in favor of adopting FYI 219-220 budget? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jim. Erica.
The next item on your agenda are two Arts Commission appointments. Jill Duncan and Jennifer Green's Arts Commission terms expired July 1st. The commission met, and they recommend Susan Mayberry, who is the Carroll County clerk, and they also recommend Dr. Kelly Steed, who's the associate dean for West Georgia Technical College of Arts and Sciences. Each of these candidates are very active in the community, and they've shown a desire to grow the arts in the community. They're also arts patrons and already active in the art center. The commission is requesting that you appoint these new members, beginning basically immediately. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Anyone have any questions? I'd like to make a motion we adopt. Susan Mayberry, Carroll County clerk, and Dr. Kelly Steed, associate dean of West Georgia Tech. A second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Board departments, Carroll County Library Board, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shirley Vancy has served the maximum number of terms that she can serve as our representative on the library board. I asked the chairman of the regional board, and also Clint Chance, who's the chairman of the construction committee for recommendations, and they actually asked me about serving. So I've already talked to all of you behind the scenes about this. We, we fund that library $300,000 a year, and I would like to keep eyes on that. It's a great library, they've got a great director now, we're building a new building, and very excited about it. It's doing a lot for Rome Street, but again, I, if you, I'd like for you to consider me for that appointment, and that way I could watch how our money's spent a little closer, unless you have someone you'd rather put, and I understand if that's the case.
Any discussion, guys? Any comments? Make a motion we adopt?
Make a motion that we appoint Tim Burris to the library board.
Motion and a second. Thank you, sir. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Congratulations, Tim. Erica, you're back. Board departments, Convention and Visitors Bureau, too.
The final item on your agenda is a board appointment to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Chris Duffy and Mike Hart's terms expire. The CVB board met, and they recommend that, to a reappointment of Mike Hart, and then to appoint Jacob Skelton for the restaurant position as well. Jacob, if you don't know, is the owner of 302 South Street. He's got pretty good experience, obviously, running a restaurant, and then also live entertainment catering for the last eight years. They asked that you appoint him beginning immediately, for a three-year term. Appoint them, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
Make a motion that we appoint Chris Duffy and Mike Hart to the Carrollton Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
No, it's Mike Hart and Jacob Skelton.
I apologize, I'm asleep. Make a motion that we, I'm going to withdraw that other motion, make a motion we appoint Mike Hart and Jacob Skelton to the Carrollton Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
Any discussion? Second. Motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Is there any other business coming before this body? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, Jim.